Good afternoon, everyone. This is the City Council meeting for Thursday, September 2, 2021. Time is approximately 1:00 p.m. This is the meeting for the City Council Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. We'll now have a flag salute led by Ryan Stindell.
Please join me in honoring our country. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. I should have said that that was Ryan, our Public Works or Director of Public Works. The City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Of course. Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
Here, and it's great to be back.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
Here. At this time, I'd like to make the following comments: That our hearts are heavy as we all reflect on the upcoming 20th anniversary of the September 11 terrorist attack and the tragic death of Indio Corporal Hunter Lopez from Indio in the recent attack in Kabul, Afghanistan. Our thoughts and prayers are with Corporal Hunter's parents, Captain Herman Lopez, Deputy Alicia Lopez, and the entire Riverside County Sheriff Department family. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence to honor Corporal Lopez and the additional 12 service members lost in Kabul and those lost 20 years ago during the attacks on September 11. And a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Let us never forget those who gave the ultimate sacrifice and continue our support and prayers for those who continue their brave service each and every day. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation and a recognition of Councilmembers Hobart and Smotrich by Tom Swan Hernandez, President of Veterans for Peace, Chapter 19.
Yes, thank you, Members of the Council. Thank you for putting me and my associate Chuck Parker on the agenda today.
There you go. Here's the microphone.
Okay, right here. Thank you. Thank you for putting us on the agenda, and our chapter is named after John Castro, who was killed in the Iraq War. He was an Army soldier, and we're headquartered here in Rancho Mirage, and we serve the Inland Empire. Mayor Ted Wall spoke at the dedication of the California LGBTQ Veterans Memorial, and he gave a wonderful speech. He was very helpful to us when we were planning that memorial and getting it dedicated. And I have some coffee cups that promote this historic memorial. I'd like to give each one of the Members of the Council. Chuck, if you can, I don't know how to get them to you. Should we take them up there? Or what? Our chapter donated the peace pole that's outside the Cathedral City Library. And the peace pole is eight foot high, it's made of cedar wood, and it says, "May Peace Prevail on Earth" in six languages. We'd like to donate one to the City Rancho Mirage, who need the Council's guidance to where to put it, either in a park, at the library, or at the river, somewhere like that. I have a certificate of appreciation for Councilmember Iris Smotrich. She was one of our financial sponsors for our Memorial Day Awards Luncheon. She gave an inspiring speech that the veterans and their families really enjoyed. She's a great friend and supporter of our veterans, so I'll leave this. So when she comes to City Hall, you can give it to her, please. Then finally...
You can give it to the City Clerk.
Yeah. And finally, the other reason I'm here, of course, is pretty important. I first met Councilmember Hobart 40 years ago, in 1981, when I worked with Ventura County Superior Court. And he was an attorney, and I used to file state office court documents. Why me too? I was a pregnant woman. In 1998, I moved to Rancho Mirage, and our Gay Political Action Committee endorsed this campaign for City Council. It's long overdue that we recognize him for his community service, and our veterans are proud to honor him today. So I'd like to ask Chuck to read the plaque for me.
Veterans for Peace, John Castro, Chapter 19, Inland Empire, California. Special award for outstanding leadership, Dana Hobart, Rancho Mirage City Council member. We honor your dedicated leadership and service to the residents of Rancho Mirage over many years. You have made Rancho Mirage the finest city in the Coachella Valley. We are extremely grateful for your strong support to save and improve the Salton Sea. You are a true role model for our youth. Our veterans salute you.
Oh, want me to give? I'll give it to you.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the honor. Iris, do you want to make a comment of some kind?
Thank you, Ted. Yes, I always want to thank people who do so much for our veterans, for our city, and give their heart and soul to the endeavors and the veterans who have given so much through the years, through the past few years especially, and who very often make the ultimate sacrifice. We have just been so lucky to have active people in our veterans, in our city. And I know Charlie, and Dana, and Ted are veterans, and we thank them for all the years of service they put in, and we thank all the veterans for the years and the days and months of service they put in, both here in America and abroad. Our thanks is endless, and we can never thank you enough. Take care, and thank you so much for the honor of a certificate.
Thank you, Iris. At this time, we will go to the non-agenda public comments, and that will be handled by our Clerk, Kristi Ramos. Kristi, would you handle that, please?
Certainly. The first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hello. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city. One of my caps fell off, so I look like the hillbilly I am. So anyway, I wanted to address this council today on a few items. Hopefully, I have enough time. I had a very close friend of mine pass away this last month, and you probably, everybody in here probably knows her. Her name's Mary Ann. She worked at the post office as a counterperson for a number of years, and it was very unexpected. And she's one of the sweetest, most kindest persons I've ever known, and I see she's going to be missed eventually. I have her dogs, by the way, so anyway. You're talking about veteran stuff, and I just want to remind everybody, September 1, 1983, when we had the Russians shot down the Korean airliner. Probably everybody remembers that, hopefully, except the younger population. But being directly involved with that operation, it draws at my heart that actually Mr. Reagan, President Reagan at the time, condemned the Russian government for the deceit for lying about the incident. And that brings me right back to the City Council. I have an issue with my neighbor again, where the co-compliance officers are coming at night to look at my lights in my backyard, and this is all reprisal actions from me complaining about this special interest of certain council members, and it needs to stop. I mean, there's going to be litigation, apparently, so please, please consider not doing that in the future, because it's very disheartening to have people looking into your backyard in the evening hours, and especially taking photographs and stuff. And that just, let's see, I'm going to bring this thing back. That just brings back to the special interests of the City Council meetings, meaning special interests for special people. And that's, I know you're attending this meeting today, but I know certain council members have attended other events, but they yet, I mean, they refuse to attend these City Council meetings in person, and Mr. Wile, you know that. So I would, hopefully, a lot of people can come to these City Council meetings, because that's really what you're elected to do. And I know City Hall is closed on Fridays. I don't know why that's their thing, and apparently you're doing deep cleaning at noon time, so I suspect that may not be true. And if you're going to, you should be open five days a week to the public and not steer close on Fridays. And I have Area 31, but I'm not going to bring that up at this time. I'll bring that up when it's on the counter. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Kristi?
Next speaker is Del Smith.
Members of the Council, I just want to say that I think that congratulations should be in order for Isaiah Hegerman for the work and arrangements he's put in to restart these wonderful hearings in this chamber. Thank you.
You can accept the congratulations, Isaiah.
Thank you, Del. Thanks for being here. For the record, I didn't pay him.
Our next speaker is Chuck Parker.
Good afternoon. Since I'm here, I wanted to update everybody real quick about the Salton Sea, since you were so kind as to have a study session two years ago. And we just had a Zoom meeting yesterday where they were kicking off, they're doing a feasibility study of ocean water import, and we're hoping that that will be a real scientifically-led study. Originally, they had picked Dr. Brent Haddad, who's with UC Santa Cruz, to head the panel, but we learned that he had written an article saying that we shouldn't even bother to restore the Salton Sea, and so they picked another person, who's Dr. Ramunder Suri from Temple University in Philadelphia, and he's got a deep background in cleaning polluted water and water infrastructure and engineering. And he was at the meeting yesterday, and he was very, seemed very modest and willing to take questions and so on. We're still concerned, because a lot of the people with the Salton Sea Authority and IID are committed to the old idea of a perimeter lake, which would be just little rim lakes that would require 50 years of construction, expensive, and not really effective. So we're hoping the study will come up with the right result, and so we encourage you to follow that. And I want to thank you all for, oh, there's one more thing. There was a restoration project that was started in 2012 at Red Hill Bay. It's a 500-acre area on the south end of the sea, near the Fish and Wildlife Preserve. And they had got, they spent $2 million so far building berms. They want to pump water from the Salton Sea back into that area, which used to be underwater, but now it's dry. But IID was supposed to bring the water pipes and the electricity and so on. They've done nothing, and now there's a danger that the $3 million grant from the state will expire. So if you know anybody with the IID Board of Directors, we encourage you to talk to them and find out what their thinking is on that. So anyway, thank you so much. It's good to be back. This is always, for me, will always be a very friendly and supportive chamber. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Kristi?
That was the last one.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a non-agenda public comment that did not fill out a card? Seeing none, is there anybody?
We'll go to our, we'll check with our remote audience. If you are participating remotely and you would like to make a non-agenda public comment, you would hit *9 on your telephone or the Raise Hand button in Zoom. We'll give you a few moments to do that. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone on the remote audience that has indicated they want to make a non-agenda public comment.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. At this time, we will have Council Board comments. I'll start with Richard, if you have any.
Thank you, Ted. For those of you who missed high school football over the last year, it is back. Last Friday, Rancho Mirage Radlers hosted Indio at home with a score 35 to nothing. The Radlers remain undefeated and are rated number one in the Coachella Valley football sphere. If you're looking for an upcoming game, here's the schedule. Tonight, the Radlers are playing Tocats at the beautiful Jerry Akowitz Stadium at Rancho Mirage High School. The game begins at 7:00 p.m. and is open to the public. So come out and support your local Radlers. Go Radlers!
Richard has always been a cheerleader for Rancho Mirage High School sports, as long as I can remember. Thank you. Dana, do you have any comments?
I'm still digesting Richard's comments.
All right. Charlie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reluctantly, I'm glad to be back. Unfortunately, the respite that we did for me put on a few pounds, which made me have to go out and buy these clothes in order to be here today. So this cost me, but I'm happy to be here, happy to be back, and hopefully, I will lose a few pounds now that we're back in...
The regiment, right?
It's good to see everybody all kidding aside. I really appreciate it. And I will say, we all missed it. It's just wonderful to be back here, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We appreciate that, and you're looking well. Iris, do you have any comments?
Just a short comment, that I'm so happy to see everyone on the dais again. I'm sorry I can't be there, but I'm looking forward to joining you at the next council meeting, and I wish you all good health. And it has been a difficult year, and it's nice to be able to resume some monicum of normalcy, whatever that might be. So take care and look for you next time.
Thank you, Iris. We will now go to the City Manager comments. Isaiah?
So the functions of our meetings will continue to be a hybrid approach. So Members of the public, just like Members of the Council, they can choose to attend remotely or in person based on their personal health preference. As long as we have a Member of the Council that is participating remotely, we will continue to do the roll call votes instead of using the voting system. And that's my comment today. Thank you.
We'll now go to the minutes of July 15. If there is anybody that has any additions or corrections, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart? Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. At this time, we'll then go to the consent calendar. Isaiah, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, you have five items on the consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is the final acceptance of installation of new cabinetry and flooring in two units at Parkview Villas. Item number three is the receive and file of the June 30, 2021 Quarterly Treasures Report. Item number four are contracts, and item number five are demands, and staff is here if you have any questions.
With you?
Kristi, do we have any speaker cards for the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that wants to make a comment on one of the consent calendar items? Okay. If you are participating remotely and you would like to make a comment on one of the consent calendar items, you would hit the *9 button on your telephone or the Raise Hand button on Zoom. Okay. Not seeing anyone that's indicated that they wish to make a comment. I'll turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaiah. Since there are no comments, may I hear a motion to approve the...
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We now have a report regarding the Palm Springs International Airport Commission update by Tom Wheel. Tom?
He's remote, right?
Yes, he'll be participating remotely.
Please give us a moment while we elevate him.
Dana said his plane didn't land, so give him a minute.
I know that he is on the line, so they're connecting him now.
Tom, are you there? So, Tom, we cannot hear you. We can see that you are unmuted, but for some reason, we're not hearing you. Perhaps what we could do, Mr. Mayor, is move on in the agenda, and we will try to continue the presentation when he's able to be heard.
Good. Hopefully, Tom, you'll be able to join us at some point during the meeting. In the meantime, we will ask Ben Flores, our senior planner, to comment regarding the Development Agreement Amendment Case Number DA 21-0004 regarding the operation and maintenance and future improvements of a Ferrari automotive dealership. Ben, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just load up the PowerPoint here. Okay. So, good afternoon, Mayor, and Members of the City Council. Development Agreement Amendment Case Number DA 21-0004 is a request from BBB Rancho Mirage LLC to propose a restated and amended development agreement for their Ferrari project site. The project site is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Highway 111 and Indian Trail Road. The project site originally consisted of multiple parcels that contained a golf cart, a retail shop, and a tire/service center that were established before the city incorporated. The current property owner, FM 111 LLC, entered into a development agreement with the city on July 21, 2018, and the purpose of this development agreement was to establish a Ferrari dealership on the property and to set certain milestone dates related to the development application submittals for the project and to memorialize certain cities' development expectations to ensure that business activities would be conducted on the site. The amended and restated development agreement, among other revisions, proposes that the counterparty benefiting from and bound to the terms and conditions of the original development agreement be replaced with BBB Rancho Mirage Re. LLC. FM 111 LLC has entered into an assignment and assumption agreement with BBB Rancho Mirage Re. LLC, whereby the original developer assigns, and BBB Rancho Mirage Re. LLC assumes all rights, obligations, and interests in the original development agreement, and the parties represent that FM 111 LLC intends to sell the subject property to BBB Rancho Mirage Re. LLC. So the purpose of the amended and restated agreement is to update certain operating and ownership details, which have changed since the original development agreement was approved in 2018, and to ensure that the city will use its best efforts to process and approve in a reasonably and timely manner certain development, construction, demolition, use, and other necessary entitlements to allow the applicant to develop the project site for the continued operation of a Ferrari automotive dealership. The future improvements may include newly constructed or remodeled buildings. So the Planning Commission considered the project at a duly noticed public hearing on July 22, 2021, and unanimously made the following recommendation. So at this time, the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council take the following actions. One, the filing of a categorical exemption of environmental impact pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act for existing facilities. Two, approving FM 111 LLC's assignment of rights to BBB Rancho Mirage Re. LLC. And three, introduce and adopt ordinance number next in line approving the proposed amended and restated development agreement, DA Case Number 21-0004, by and between the City Rancho Mirage and BBB Rancho Mirage Re. LLC. So that concludes staff's presentation, and staff and project representative are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anybody on the council that has any question?
Yes, I just have a quick question. When will this redevelopment and remodeling start? Does anybody have a date?
So applicants submitted a minor modification to the Planning Division this Monday for a remodel of the existing service building there. So they're in progress right now.
Very good. So it's in different phases, Ben?
So they're proposing to remodel the service building at this time, and then future development plans will be up to the Ferrari ownership as to when they want to propose those.
Okay, so this just applies to that first thing that you just said, which is the bays.
Yeah, right now, they're just proposing to remodel the service building for the continued service of Ferrari automobiles in the Coachella Valley.
Thank you.
Are there any other council comments? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments? Kristi, are you holding any comments?
No, I have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
So we'll ask our... Oh, yeah, please come forward. You can come to the podium over here, and please state your name.
Yes, good afternoon, esteemed Members of the City Council, Directors of the City Staff, and Members of the public in attendance. My name is Dexter Goh, and I represent the executive team responsible for the Ferrari corporate identity facelift project. I just want to start off by thanking the Members of the Development Services staff, Jeremy and Ben, who have been an invaluable resource to us in our endeavor to amend the existing development agreement that we have with the city. We are very excited to expand Ferrari's presence here in the Coachella Valley with the establishment of our motorsports program and also through the organic development of our sales and service departments. So I'm here to answer any questions that the City Council may have today. I also have my legal counsel, Ms. Amy Contreras, with Munger Tools Olson, our architect, Armin Kazanjin, with Kazanjin Design. our architect, Armin Kazanjin with Kazanjin Design, and our general contractor, Mr. Sean Sowers with Sowers Construction online on the Zoom meeting as well.
Just a question. How long do you see this all rolling out? First of all, thank you, congratulations, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
There, and we're all looking forward to seeing it improved and looking forward to seeing what you're going to do. But how long is this going to roll?
We have originally proposed a very strict deadline to have all of the renovations done by the end of this year. Now, the completion of our project is actually tied to a number of dealer incentives, specifically allocations and bonuses and millions of dollars given granted by Ferrari corporate. Now, we have had a slight delay with our project, but we're looking to start work as soon as the billing permits are issued to us, and we're still hoping to make that December 2021 deadline, if possible.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, we're excited. We look forward to the dealership becoming a reality. We think it'll be a great addition to the city. It will work very well, obviously, with the other dealerships in that area, and so we wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. If there are no other comments from the council, I'll ask if there are any comments from anyone remotely that would like to make a comment.
Yeah, so if you'd like to participate in the public hearing for this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. We'll give them a few minutes to. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone that wishes to speak in the remote audience.
All right. If there are no other comments from the council, I'll entertain a motion regarding Development Agreement Amendment Case Number DA 21-004.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I will make that motion. The City Council, A, approve the filing of categorical exemption of environmental impact pursuant to Section 15301 of CEQA for existing facilities. B, approve FM 111 LLC, assignment of rights to BBB Ranch and Mirage, R E L L C, and C. Introduce ordinance number next in order, first reading, approving the amendment and restated statutory development agreement by and between the City of Ranch and Mirage and BBB Ranch and Mirage, R E L L C, regarding the development of a Ferrari automobile dealership on certain real property located in District 5, Highway 111 East, specific plan.
Okay, and I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call, Christie, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution Number 2021, calling an election and levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 1. And that's going to be handled by Kofi Antambom, our Director of Administrative Services. Kofi, if you would, please.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is to hold a public hearing on annexation number 185 into CFD Number 1. This is the final step in the city standard process for annexations into CFD 1. The first step was considered and approved by the City Council on July 15, 2021. The project, the territory proposed to be annexed, is located on the southwest corner of Highway 111 and Mirage Road and comprises of a portion of one parcel totaling 25.54 acres. The project proposes two auto dealerships and a service building, combining for a total of 30,452 square feet. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the City Council may consider adoption of the attached resolution, calling an election, declaring the results of the special elections, determining validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Are there any public comments? City Clerk, please.
Yes, we have one. Brad Anderson?
Hi, thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Ranch and Mirage. I'm not absolutely opposed to this project, but I have concerns when you annex into certain districts because of the non-sunset clause of, I guess, inflation, cost of... I can't think of the wording. I'm trying to think of the wording, but you're just increasing the volume into that certain area or in that district, and you have sunset clause or non-sunset clauses with tax purposes. And that's a legal issue for later. That's one of my concerns of doing this. And this is, of course, this is a speedy process for this development to continue anyway. And I think a lot of the public probably doesn't have input because of the early meeting times. But anyway, and it's going to increase traffic along that road too, Long Highway 111, which I'm actually just walking over here. A person ran a red light, and I was not in the crosswalk, but close to it. And we should really concern ourselves with people doing that versus... Well, anyway, I'm sorry. I need to go. I have other commitments, but thank you very much for letting me speak today.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments that you're holding, Christie?
No.
I'll ask if there are any comments that anybody would like to make remotely. Isaiah, would you check that, please?
Sure. So, if you would like to participate in the public hearing, now is the time to do so. You would hit star nine on your telephone or hit the raise hand button. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone else here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak? All right, we'll check our remote audience. Give me a moment. All right, there's no one on the remote audience that wishes to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaiah. I'll now ask the City Clerk if she would please give us the results of the election.
Of course. The ballot for the 26 eligible votes was received on August 31, 2021, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Thank you very much. And again, I will ask if there are any additional public comments. And are there any further comments by the City Council? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion on this item.
All right, I'll make a motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2021, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 1, annexation number 185, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien.
There's a motion and a second. Christie, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart? Councilmember Kite? Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, well, I'm pleased to say that... Yeah. That we have a presentation from Tom Wheel regarding the Palm Springs International Airport Commission update. Tom, welcome. I know that this is your, you know, first presentation, and I'm glad you're here. You're welcome. Let me say this while Tom is coming up to the podium. Many times, I will tell Tom he mispronounces his name, being pronounced Wheel as opposed to me being Wile. And the irony is, we go to the same cleaner, and many times, I will be handed Tom's clothing, which unfortunately doesn't fit very well. But I'm sure it is a good fit, being on the Palm Springs Airport Commission, and we welcome you, Tom, and look forward to hearing your report.
Well, thank you. First of all, let me say congratulations to Dana and to Iris. Well-recognized and well-deserved. Apparently, there, before I got on the council or commission, there was a controversy between the City of Palm Springs and the airport due to increased loitering and damage to cars, theft in contents of cars across the street from where this boxing club had been located. That, and I'm short cutting a bit, that has been... It was run by the Well in the Desert. The Well in the Desert had its conditional use permit revoked, but they continued to operate there anyways because it was dreadfully hot this summer, and that offered an opportunity to our homeless people to have a place to go to get cool. That is, that controversy has had a happy ending. Martha's Kitchen has taken over the operation as of April 4 yesterday, and they will be offering showers. They're in the process of getting ramped up. They'll be offering all the services that are necessary to keep these people contained. They will have security an hour and a half before the facility opens, an hour and a half after it closes, and all hours while it's operating to check for drug use and other social needs. So, I'm pleased to say that I think that controversy has come to an end. You should be aware that the east, the southmost section of the airport has been opened with additional stations to process passengers. The baggage area has been renovated, and I believe there are two new air ramps that are being installed as we speak. Total amount was, I think, $36 million for that renovation, and it should be $36 million. And it adds to the luster that's already coming in our direction. We have Flair Airlines has announced two direct service to Vancouver and Edmonton. Allegiant is going to offer direct flights to Provo, Utah, Des Moines, and Indianapolis. And Southwest has announced direct service to a variety of states and cities within the United States. Frontier Airlines, on the other hand, has terminated its relationship with the Airport Commission and the airport. We had a job fair. There are 80 vacancies, and there are now some applications, and we'll continue that effort going forward. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Tom, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is all the remodeling done? Are you?
It's all finished. We had a grand reopening.
I saw that on television.
It was last week. Yes, sir.
Looks beautiful.
Yes, it should be a great addition of communities. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm, you know, this work, the Zoom thing worked perfectly with the Airport Commission, and I don't know what went wrong with this one, but we'll get it straightened out.
Everything works out fine.
Thank you.
We all...
Thank you all.
It's new for all of us. We're still struggling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The next item is Resolution Number 2021, approving an application, a grant application to the State of California. Ryan Stendell, our Director of Public Works, will present that.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, the item before you this afternoon is a draft resolution that would allow staff to complete a grant funding application in the amount of just under $200,000, which is tentatively earmarked for the Wolfson Park Expansion Project. Again, staff's, you have staff's report and draft resolution. If approved this afternoon, we'll tidy up our application, get it submitted as soon as possible. And this is an allocation-based grant, so we don't anticipate any challenges with receiving a funding award. However, it is draft at this point, and staff's asking for approval of the attached resolution, which would allow us to apply for funding. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions that the council has?
Yes, I do. Ryan, is the final plans already done? Is it set in concrete?
So, if you'll recall, the City Council gave staff authorization to move on to construction documents. So, yes, in essence, we are working on the construction documents right now. We staff reviewed a 60% set within the last two to three weeks and anticipate a full set of construction documents within the next 30 to 45 days.
Very good. And my famous question, the timeline unshovelled in the ground.
Sure. We're looking to put the project out to bid prior to the end of the calendar year 2021, with awarding a contract in early 2022. And if I had my druthers, we'd be putting plants in the ground before the end of May, but I don't know that we're going to make that. So, we'll be working through the summer, and in the effort to produce the best product, we'll probably be planting and tidying up and getting out of there in the fall.
Very good. It was a great project, great addition to our parks in Ranch and Mirage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other?
Okay, I have one question, if I might interrupting anyone?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, Ryan, I just wanted to find out if you knew if this is a grant that we will submit the application, and hopefully, it will be approved. Do you know when the funds will be allocated to us?
It's a reimbursement-based formula, so I don't anticipate any problems with receiving reimbursement after we've already expended funds, meaning these funds are available right now. The Proposition 68 grant process has been out there for some time. So, I don't have the grant information sitting right in front of me, but our timeline is perfect for this funding.
Right, but you don't know when we will receive the funds from them?
We would receive them in arrears, meaning we'd have to expend the funds, build the project, and then the state will reimburse us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome on the dais.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Christie, are you holding any comments?
No. Not for this item.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments regarding this grant application? Seeing none, Isaiah, is there anybody remotely?
So, if you're participating remotely and wish to speak on this item, you would hit the star nine button on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom, and we will give you a few moments to do that. All right, Mr. Mayor, no one has indicated that they wish to speak on this item.
All right, thank you. There are no additional council comments. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Dana, put your button down.
Well, somebody made a motion.
Motion that the...
Dana's in the process of making a motion. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dana.
I move that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2021, next in order, approving applications for per capita grant funds.
Second, the motion.
There's a motion and a second by Richard Kite. There's a motion and a second by Richard Kite. If you will call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will also be presented by Kofi Antabam, our Director of Administrative Services, regarding Resolution Number 2021, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One. Kofi, if you would, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This item is the first step in the standard process for annexations into CFD One. The second and final step will be considered at the October 7, 2021 council meeting. If the IT team can pull up the aerial for me. So as projected on the screen, the territory proposed for annexation is located within the existing Porcupine Creek Estate, comprises of a portion of four parcels totaling approximately 190 acres. This project is slated to reposition Porcupine Creek as an exclusive retreat with a total of up to 50 studio, single bedrooms, and multi-bedroom units. PDP 20-006 and DA 20001 were approved by the City Council on March 11, 2021, and has a condition of approval to annex into CFD Number One. So in accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the City Council initiate annexation proceedings to annex this territory into the district and provide for an expedited approval of the annexation and the levy of special taxes. The approval of the resolution before you today would allow the city to accept the petition submitted by the owner, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow a shortening of the time for special election, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and establish the date and time for the public hearing on this annexation. Staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kofi. City Clerk, are we, have we received any requests for comments on this item?
We did receive one from Mr. Brad Anderson, but he has since left the meeting.
Okay, if anyone in our remote audience would like to make a comment on this item, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone else here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, let us check in with the remote audience. No one has indicated they wish to speak on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any additional council comments? If not, I will make a motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2021, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities Service, Community Facilities District Number One, and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. Prelimarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation Number 184.
I'll second that.
And I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. If you would call for a vote, please, Kristi.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Who made the second? It was a tie. I mean, she may be able to tell us, but we should have a record.
Kristi, did you have the who made the second on that motion?
I have Mayor Protim Townsend, as I heard his first.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dana, for the suggestion. The next item is going to be presented by Jessica Pulliam, our Senior Management Analyst regarding expanding the residential solar rebate. If you would, Jessica.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item I'll be presenting for your consideration today is a request for council to authorize solar battery storage as eligible under the Residential Solar Rebate Program and to update program guidelines for the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, RMEA. I'll provide a brief program recap, touch on the importance of continued expansion in renewable energy, and show how residents can do their part to continue to reduce their Rancho Mirage Energy Authority was established by the City Council through the adoption of Ordinance 1125 on October 5 of 2017, and began serving customers in May of 2018. The primary goal of RMEA is to help reduce our community's Southern California SCE electricity bills through the procurement of energy that provides RMEA customers with less expensive rates than existing SCE rates. RMEA offers local control, providing the city and customers a choice regarding their electricity source, providing cleaner energy for less, and providing the choice to opt up to 100% renewable energy. Moving away from non-renewable energy sources through energy efficiency programs and investments are some of the most constructive and cost-effective ways to address the challenge of high energy prices, air pollution, and global climate change. Renewable energy sources directly address these issues. The city has already made a meaningful impact in the community by providing an affordable means for residents to reduce their carbon footprint through offering affordable energy rates and through programs such as the Residential Solar Rebate Program. Residents can choose to further their efforts through opting up to use 100% renewable energy through RMEA's Premium Renewable Choice Plan. Based on the average Rancho Mirage residential account using approximately 1,100 kilowatts per month, this comes to just a small incremental increase of $9.90 each month to use even cleaner energy for each household. All city meters are on this plan. Using 100% renewable energy is just one way we do our part to keep Rancho Mirage even more beautiful. For those watching this council meeting online or via RMTV, if you pull out your smartphone, open your camera, and scan the QR code on the screen, you'll be directed to the RMEA website, where you can opt up your home to 100% renewable energy and learn ways to save money with tips and rebates. Expanding the current Residential Solar Rebate Program to include the installation of solar battery storage as eligible continues the city's promotion of clean energy. Residents will be able to take their excess clean energy, their solar panels captured during the day, and store it for later use. Having stored energy available decreases the overall demand for power from the grid during flex alerts by giving residents with solar battery storage the ability to use their stored energy, and can also provide more reliability for those needing power for medical devices. The current Residential Solar Rebate Program provides a $500 rebate per household in the form of a one-time incentive payment, reducing project costs for homeowners. Currently, this rebate is for new solar panel installations and expansions to existing solar panel systems for residents actively enrolled in RMEA since inception, May 2018, or actively enrolled in RMEA for one year. I apologize, that was not supposed to do that. With that, it is staff's recommendation that council authorize solar battery storage as eligible under the Residential Solar Rebate Program and update the program guidelines for the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. To date, RMEA has been incredibly successful with encouraging residents to choose solar and has provided over 900 solar rebates since the inception of the Solar Rebate Program. The promotion of both solar and solar battery storage installation represents an increasingly viable and cost-effective means for helping our community to address climate goals and help residents stabilize their energy bills by improving public health through reduced air pollution. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica, that was great. Kristi, do you have any, holding anyone that would like to make comments?
I do not.
Isaiah, is there anybody remotely that would like to comment on this item?
So our remote audience, if you'd like to speak on this item, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone else here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on this item? All right, we will go to our remote audience and give them a few moments longer. Quiet group out there today. No one wishes to speak on this item, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you, Isaiah. Are there council comments regarding this item?
I think it should be supported strongly.
Well, there's no question about that. Councilmember Hobart said there should be a lot of support. Let me say this, before I ask for a vote, there are times that the City Council has received comments about, boy, you people, you know, spend a lot of time complimenting yourselves, telling yourselves how wonderful you're doing, or what a great job you're doing. And I think a lot of that's misinterpreted because what we are saying is what a wonderful job the city is doing, the city staff is doing, and in this case, how fortunate we are to have a city that can afford to do this, that can voluntarily say, yes, we want to increase the rebate to people that are going to further our mission of sustainability. That's a wonderful position to be in. There is nothing that forces us to do this. I will say this, that we have a city manager, and we have a staff that is very conscious of contributing to the well-being of our residents and society. So it gives me a great deal of pleasure and an honor to ask for actually a motion on this particular item. With that in mind...
All right, I will do that.
Like to do that, Charlie?
I will, thank you very much. Recommending that the City Council authorize solar battery storage as eligible under the Residential Solar Rebate Program and update the program guidelines for the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, and I certainly do, ditto, ditto, what you said, Ted, beautifully done.
Thank you, Charlie. Dana, did I hear you say you seconded?
I seconded.
And it's a second by Councilmember Hobart. Call for a vote, Kristi, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Yes, wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just comment real quickly on that item?
Of course.
I just wanted to thank the council for their continued efforts with this program. As you know, in the early days, we were pressured by outside entities to do it a different way. We did it the Rancho Mirage way, and it's worked out very well for our community, and it's just one of those unique things that we offer. Obviously, you know, for the vast majority of our city, we're all kind of suffering under Southern California Edison rates, and with our climate on top of that. And so really, the council grabbed onto this program pretty quickly and saw it as a way to make a positive impact. And this program specifically that you just authorized us to amend to include battery storage, that's a very important step for this program. And really, the point of this program was for those that are going to go solar to help the, encourage them with a $500 rebate from the city. So, you know, you get tax credits and things of that nature, but when a resident goes solar, it helps them almost eliminate their monthly bills, and it almost gives them back the power from the utility, from a monopoly in Southern California Edison. This next component is the development of battery technology over the last few years has been incredible, and we're all seeing these flex alerts come out more and more with the threat that if the state doesn't conserve energy, they're going to turn power off because there's not enough power on the grid. So by going to battery storage, that's going to provide energy for that home during the most crucial moments when the grid is stressed at the max and we don't have enough energy. Also, if they have medical equipment that they rely on at home, you know, it can supplement their use so that that medical equipment stays on. So from a battery technology standpoint, you know, that's just another way that I think we can encourage people to, one, help themselves out, and also put a little bit of power back in the customer's hands from this big utility. Jessica's done a great job with the program. If anyone ever has questions about a bill, or what the program is, or how it works, I would encourage them just to call up and to City Hall and just ask that you want to speak to somebody about the Energy Authority program, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that are there. But this is one of those unique things the council did that is, you know, directly lowering utility bills, and at the same time, there is a huge sustainability aspect to this program. We are providing a greener energy product to our community. We are lowering our carbon footprint, and with that, we often run into people that, you know, they have very strong feelings about doing what they can at home to help the environment. Our 100% renewable program, a customer can voluntarily opt up to that program, and 100% of their energy needs and their usage, we will procure 100% renewable energy for your usage, and it's just another simple step. And, you know, for the average customer, when you just average it out, it's about $10 a month extra from what they pay now. So a very simple step to take to really, for the greater good of helping the environment and reducing your carbon footprint. The city, as you know, the council authorized the city to put all 190 city accounts on the 100% renewable plan since the adoption of this program. So since May of 2018, all city meters have been 100% renewable energy. And it's just another way that the city is leading the way to reduce our carbon footprint.
Thanks, Isaiah, and I will echo this, that we on the City Council are asked regularly, generally, it's in the form of, I received my utility bill, I don't understand it, it's confusing, what does this mean? I got a rebate last year, I didn't this year, it seems terribly high, et cetera, et cetera. We get those questions, obviously, as we would expect to get them because we're the face of the city. But it's Jessica and her people that handle the questions. That is very easy for us to refer it to her, and in each and every case, the answer comes back to me is, thanks so much, I got a wonderful explanation, I now better understand it, and it's just a wonderful advantage to have somebody like Jessica handling these kinds of questions. So thank you, Jessica.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Dana, please.
I think Richard and I were on the subcommittee that worked with our city manager and eventually leading us to success. I don't know that anybody can understand how much time and talent that he put into it. Other cities were attempting to apply for and be eligible to receive the benefits of their own city being the managers of their eligible solar energy, or energy. And Isaiah was always two steps ahead of them, and it was- And Isaiah was always two steps ahead of them, and it was an amazing lesson to learn that, how much a city manager, how much of a difference a city manager can make. And on that project, we were meeting deadlines and barely being able to make them, and making applications where others had not yet gotten to the application point. And I just want to say, you were magnificent, and your product is what we deal with daily.
Thank you.
Well spoken, Dana. We all concur. The next item will be handled by Kristi Ramos, our city clerk, and that, this is an appointment to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. Kristi?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and council members, there is currently one vacancy on the city's Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission for nomination by Mayor Pro Tim Townsend. Mr. Gary Jones applied for the position on July 26. After reviewing his application, Mayor Pro Tim Townsend decided to nominate Mr. Jones to serve as a member of the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission for the remainder of the current term, which runs through the end of May 2022. This nomination requires ratification by the city council, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Is there any comments that you've received regarding this appointment?
No, there is not.
Isaiah, would you ask if there are anybody remotely that would like to make a comment?
Sure, if our remote audience wants to make a comment, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. We give you a few moments to do that. Anyone else here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one. Give our remote audience just a few more moments. All right, no one has indicated that they wish to speak on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make a comment regarding this appointment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for approval for the appointment to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission.
Well, then, I will do that, seeing that my name is on there somewhere. Does the city council appoint Gary Jones to serve as a member of the Ranch and Mirage Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission for the remainder of the current term? Congratulations to you.
There's a motion and a second by Councilmember Hobart. If you would, Kristi, roll call.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And the last scheduled item is the appointment to the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership Board of Directors. Kristi, if you would, please.
Of course. Mayor and council members, the city council recently approved a contribution of $10,000 to the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership for fiscal year 2122. This investment provides an opportunity for a member of the Ranch and Mirage City Council to serve on the C-Vet Board of Directors. Prior to the pandemic, Mayor Wile served as the city's delegate on the C-Vet Board, and Mayor Pro Tim Townsend served as the alternate. The city council may vote for Mayor Wile and Mayor Pro Tim Townsend to resume these roles or submit alternative nominations. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you received any comments about the appointments?
No, I have not.
Isaiah, would you see if there's anybody remotely that would like to make a comment?
Sure, if our remote audience would like to make a comment, you would hit the star nine button on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone else here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak? All right, we'll check in with our remote audience. All right, Mr. Mayor, no one wishes to speak.
Is there any one on the council that would like to make a comment regarding this illustrious appointment of these two fine individuals?
Say that, fine, that's all you can say?
I thought that, I was trying to be modest, to be honest with you.
Oh, thank you.
If there are no comments publicly or otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve the appointments.
Well, all right, my name is on it again. Does the city council appoint Mayor Wile to serve as the delegate, and Mayor Pro Tim Townsend to serve as the alternate on the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership Board of Directors?
That's a one-two punch that I second.
Okay, and it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Townsend, and a second by Councilmember Hobart. Kristi, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. That concludes the portion of the meeting that is scheduled. We will be going into closed session in a moment, and I'll ask our city attorney if he will please give us the agenda for the closed session.
Yes, I will, as soon as that comes back up here. Let's see, where do we go here? Okay, so city council, oh, first of all, I'd like to welcome our new member to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. I can assure you that it's very exciting, so buckle your seatbelt because you're going to be pretty busy in the next month or so. So at this point, the city council is going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding existing litigation known as Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Ranch and Mirage and RM Vacation Rentals LLC et al. versus City Ranch and Mirage. The council also is going to meet with its labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6A. The labor negotiator is the city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, and the employee organization is the Ranch and Mirage Employees Association. The council will also meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 regarding one potential initiation of litigation item. So that concludes my report for closed session, and I'll see you on closed session.
All right, thank you, Steve. With that, we will be taking a recess and going into closed session. Thank you.
It is 4:21, and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.